How about now, Kristin? Yes?
Good.
Okay.
Okay. Welcome for the third time. June 9, 2021, school committee meeting. We're streaming this live and recording it. The recording will be posted on the Masco website following the meeting. And I just want to let you know that one of our members is joining us via the Zoom link tonight, which is good because she can give us feedback. That's Kristin DiMarco. Everybody else is with me here in the high school library. I'm going to begin with remarks from the chair, and I have a couple tonight. First, I want to congratulate all of our seniors who graduated on Friday. Hey. Class of 2021 demonstrated a lot of grace, flexibility, and resilience over the past 15 months, and we wish them the best. And my second remark is I wanted to take a minute to say thank you. This will be the last meeting we'll have with this group of school committee members, given the upcoming elections. And I just want each of you to know how thankful I am to have worked with you during this, the past very long year. I want each of you to know how thankful I am about that. We've endured a lot as a school committee during the pandemic, not to mention in our private lives. And I know each of us always put Masco students first in every decision we debated and made. We did so in a respectful and professional manner in an environment that didn't always encourage that type of debate. I also want to thank the executive leadership team, Mike, Jeff, Patty, Pete, and Phil, for working with us this year for patiently and professionally answering all of our questions and working tirelessly for our students to keep them safe, allow them to learn in unprecedented conditions. And lastly, the logistics of these meetings had to change a lot this year, like everything else. And TJ, Jackie, and Lynn rose to the occasion with their creativity and professionalism. And I just have small tokens of appreciation sitting in front of you at the table. And Kristin, I will drop yours in the mail. Going to move on to comments from the audience. We're going to do this in regular Zoom fashion. If you would like to make a comment or ask a question, if you could raise your electronic hand. And following normal public meeting protocol, I just want to let you know that we won't necessarily respond immediately to these comments, but we may choose to address the topics raised through an agenda items later in the meeting or at a future meeting. Don't see any hands yet. Do you? Oh, why did they show up here? All right. Okay. All right, I'm going to begin with Kathleen Scarpato. If you could also say what town you're from. Kathleen?
Yep, hi. Thank you for calling on me. Kathleen Scarpato from Topsfield. I really just, I want to follow up actually on the two questions that I asked at our last meeting. I didn't see it on the agenda, I hope we will be discussing it, about the plan to help bridge the gap, the learning loss for students this summer, and also how the state mandate from last month plays into the Masco plans. So what is that, what is the state mandate on learning, summer learning programs going to impact Masco? But I also wanted to add a question to that. I was curious if the wind block I hadn't heard yet is going to remain part of the permanent schedule starting next year or not? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. I'm just writing down. Okay. Next up is Carol Crispo.
Hi there. I just wanted to bring up, this is on the agenda tonight. In about four to six weeks ago, I started corresponding with Dr. Harvey about the anti-racism resolution. I forwarded my email to the subcommittee, and I just have a couple of questions that I did want answered because I'm sure you all know this is such a hot topic in the news right now and all over the internet that I just would, I want to get my information directly from you. I don't want to Google things and look things up that way. So I just wanted to know if I could get the link to the website and how the seniors were trained for the peer-to-peer interactions? And if I could get like an example of two or of a specific, like activity that they, a senior would do with a freshman. My son will be a freshman next year, and I just, I just want to look into it. I want to make sure it aligns with how I'm raising my children with my husband and my faith and everything that ties into it. So I'd just rather get it directly from you versus all over the place. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. All right. And next up is Trevor Courier. And Trevor, can you just let us know what town you're from, please?
Yep, okay. So Trevor Courier, I'm from Middleton. I, I was a senior this year, so I just graduated. And I was one of the peer leaders who went through the ADL training. And I watched the last meeting and how peer leaders are now supposed to be teaching the freshmen. I, one, don't think it's a good idea to have kids teaching kids these things. If you went around asking how the ADL training went, I don't know one person who'd say it went well. And I would have said something at the last meeting, but how I was treated after speaking out against someone who's currently on the school committee, how I was treated in the building, I did not feel comfortable doing that. So I'm here now, graduated. And I think you should put some more thought into having kids teaching kids these like heavy subjects that, one, I don't even think belong in the school, but for then kids to be at fault if a parent complains or something. It feels like the kids are being used as scapegoats in this situation.
All right, thank you, Trevor. Anybody else have a question tonight or a comment? You don't see any others? All right, okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your comments. All right, next up is the student advisory board update. Lindsay, are you going to do that for us?
Yeah.
Hey.
Should I stay here? It's like sitting.
Probably, that's our best. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everyone. It's Lindsay Byman for our last reading together this school year. I am happy to report that in-person school has been going great. The morale in the building is upbeat, and the students are all more engaged. Furthermore, we have been enjoying some newer developments, like being able to eat lunch outside, and we're hoping that this can continue in the future. In other regards, next year, students are hoping that the locker rooms will reopen so they don't need to change in the bathrooms or in their cars. They have also been wondering if the water fountains will be reopened, especially during the last few really hot days. Another common question is the schedule, and specifically whether the waterfall schedule will return, and what will become of the wind block, and if we'll have homeroom or not. It puts students at a disadvantage to have a class at their least productive hour every day. So a rotating schedule will greatly benefit productivity. This year has also shown the usefulness of having a free period to meet with teachers, attend club meetings, or do homework. The popular student opinion is to have the wind period as a fixed block and to bring back the rotating schedule so the class that rotates into the wind block is essentially dropped. Although we have hopes for next year, we understand that the ever-changing circumstances make these decisions difficult. In other news, the peer leaders hosted both their first and last event of the year. On Monday, they had a field day with the freshmen after MCAS, and the positive outcome of the event was an indication of a slight return to pre-pandemic times. Finally, Foxford State Representative Tran Mian spoke today on behalf of the Appreciating Cultures and Ethnicities Club regarding the Stop Asian Hate Movement and other similar topics. This event, in combination with the Black History Month Assembly, shows progress towards immersing the Masco community in more diversity. However, the question is, how do we continue this process? The meeting minutes of the anti-racism subcommittee demonstrate progressive ideals, but more immediate actions are necessary to see these ideals to fruition. Overall, this year has brought on one hurdle after another, but the Masco community has persevered to not only maintain a sense of normalcy, but to adopt new traditions. Thank you for all of your hard work, and I'll see you in the fall.
Thank you, Lindsay. Does anyone have any questions? Lindsay?
I would just like to comment, my son's a freshman, and he really loved the field day. He said it was.
Oh, yeah.
So thank you for whoever put that together.
That was always my favorite day of school.
I know.
Right day for it.
That's not normally done, right? We don't normally have field day in the high school, do we?
Yeah, no, I was talking about my.
No, I know.
History.
No, I know.
I don't think that we have field days at this level. So I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Yeah.
That was the peer leaders with the freshman, right?
Right, it was after MCAS on Monday.
Yeah. I'm glad everyone was okay with the heat.
Well, we were under the tent.
Under the tent, it was nice. It was a good breeze. It was good.
Very nice.
Nice.
Awesome. Great. Thank you, Lindsay. We look forward to working with you next year, too. All right, next up is the high school principal report. Oh, did I? Oh, Randy, I'm sorry.
Randy's up next.
Next up is E., Field Trip Proposal from Randy O'Keefe.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. E., TJ, help me. Where do I go, bud? I have a printed document. Oh, actually, I have an addendum to that. I'm going to pass, if you guys could take one and pass them around. I got a price change from one of the vendors after I had done this. So, once again, if you look at your, we're proposing or asking permission to take our performing ensembles overseas next year to Vienna and Budapest. Tells you sort of a history, I think, page in, of the trips we have taken domestically and abroad since 1991. We've developed sort of a cycle of trip traveling from doing Disney in New York domestically and then traveling in Europe, mostly in Europe. So, the New York trip in 2020, of course, was canceled. That's when the pandemic started, and we're proud to say that our travel consultant refunded our students directly 97. So there was no, you know, travel vouchers or coupons for future trips. He just, he got refunds from vendors in New York City as much as he could, and then he refunded the cost directly back to our students. Of course, there was no trip last year, or this, I mean, this year because of the pandemic. So we're now moving into the next trip, which would be our European trip, which we put out to bid. And the three bids were from three different vendors. The addendum you have is from All Seasons, the change in price. So we have All Seasons Travel, which is a local vendor out of Peabody, which we've used before, World Strides, which is based in Charlottesville, Virginia, and the ACFEA tour consultant based in Pennsylvania. So as you can see, the bids are very competitive, and the All Seasons Travel bid has actually been reduced because the owner of the company said he got a reduction in airfare from the airlines. So their prices even, it shows up in the, it doesn't show up here, but you can see the cost change slightly is below the other ones. All three trips, when you look at the itineraries and the sites and the performance venues, all three of them are pretty much very similar. So, and I said, disclaimer in my opening page is that we've used All Seasons pretty extensively since like 1993. So they've been our vendor. But we continually, we continuously go out to bid each time we do these trips just to show that they are very competitive. So.
Randy, was All Seasons the company that facilitated the refunds two years ago? Great.
Randy? On the All Seasons, it's asterisk, the flight taxes and fuel surcharges not included. Does that mean they're included in the bids of the other two vendors?
They are, but, so there are several things in the other ones that are not included. The All Seasons pricing, the way we've done it with All Seasons before is that Mr. Janino automatically figures in a ratio of one chaperone per 10 students. So you take the total cost of each individual. You cycle in what a chaperone would cost. You funnel that into 10, every 10 students. So the All Seasons quote, there's, it's included one chaperone per 10 students. Other quotes don't include that. If you want to do that, you have to do it yourself. So you have to, one thing I don't like about that, puts the financial responsibility on us to do that, which then, I'd rather have the vendor do that. So it's their, their policy, not mine. So we've gone with one to 10 before, and it works great.
Hello.
Yeah.
Liam's at Home Depot getting stuff. He's almost done.
Non-Home Depot related question. So for the other vendors, there, I guess what would have to happen is that you have to have a chaperone for every 10 students, right?
No, no, that's what we want with, you, you can set up, they don't specifically give you that ratio. If you, you can decide how many you want to do. You want to do one to 12, but then you have to do the math, and then you adjust.
So, so this helped me understand. So if you chose one of the other vendors, and I'm not asking you to do a calculation off the top of your head, but, but, but you'd have to figure out how many chaperones you'd need.
Yes.
And then, and I presume, is it normally one to 10 or something like that?
Yep.
And then that total cost, however.
A chaperone cost is those.
And is then distributed.
Yes.
All the other.
Yep.
So they're not apples-to-apples comparisons, is, I guess, the point. So All Seasons includes it, whereas World Strides and ACFEA are understated because they do not include the prorata cost of chaperones.
But the other ones include the taxes and.
Right.
Charge.
Yeah. Right.
Also, look, when going through them, that All Seasons included a chaperone from port to port.
Yes, actually, when we've traveled with All Seasons, the thing about All Seasons is All Seasons is really a domestic travel company. So we've used them for Disney in New York. They are an international company. So if you read closely the All Seasons, they subcontract with Music Contact International, which does international festivals all over the world. So we will really be working also with them. So when we've ever, when we've traveled to Europe, there's a, and all, Music Contact International is based out of Burlington, Vermont. So every time we've gone to Europe, represented from Music Contact International, as well as Bob Janino from All Seasons have also traveled with us, and they've been with us the whole trip.
That must be nice.
So.
Didn't look like the other companies had.
And I have to be real honest, there's been, certainly should write a book, but every, almost every trip we've gone on, something has happened that has been totally out of our control. When we went to, went to, I think it was Northern Italy. Oh, no, we went to Barcelona. The trip was all booked through Iberia. We're leaving on a Friday before spring break. One month before the trip is to leave, Iberia cancels the route. And I'm a band director, so if I'm booking a trip, who do I call? I don't know what to do. Mr. Janino immediately got ahold of Delta, booked us out of New York. He got us three coach buses. We went down to New York, we left, we had a great trip. And as, as it happened, which was happenstance, I guess, for luck, that was the marathon bombing. When we were flying back from Barcelona to, to New York, coming back to Logan, we would have been diverted because Logan was shut down because the day we came back was the day he was caught. And everything in Massachusetts was shut down. So, you know, that's what, I have a travel agent with us, and they take care of everything. So, yeah, I have many stories like that. So, so I, I mean, I have a lot of faith in, Mr. Janino, he's a retired educator. He started this company, and he's really, since 93, he's just taken us everywhere, so.
Is there, given the hassle, I guess, that he did to get back the 97% refund, I assume refunds are now really important when booking travel.
Yeah.
Is there guaranteed something that you'll?
Well, it tells you here, refund policy. On the second page of the All Seasons, he talks about the refund policy that students will have. And I think, once again, in talking with him directly, a lot of this is going to be dependent upon things out of our control, like what is the international vaccination? Is there going to be an international vaccination passport? Is there going to be, you know? So we, you know, we're seeing how this works with international travel from now until through the summer and how things are going. So there is some, there are refund schedules and cancellation fees. And people can also purchase trip insurance, too.
Cover that.
So. The thing about All Seasons that I like is I, I know who to call. You know, and then actually, the thing was with the other companies, and they do, and quite frankly, World Strides, the reason I contacted them is they, they're, one of their subsidiaries is the Heritage Festivals, which we've hosted for 15 years. So I know the people from Utah that come here. So I used to, I figured I'd give them a shot. But once again, you're talking to a big company, and you're talking to a salesperson, and the person selling you the trip is not going with you. You know, and the same with the other company. They're not going with you. They just sell the trip, and they pass you off to someone else.
Yeah, that's the big difference.
So is it safe to say you recommend, you, your recommendation would go with All Seasons? So, okay. And I believe field trips need to be approved by the committee, which is why we're talking to you tonight. Thank you for getting the quotes, because I know we've asked for that in the past.
Sure.
It's appreciated. We just want to make sure that our students are getting a reasonable deal. Does anybody have a motion?
I make a motion. Billy can make it, I'll second it.
What is your motion? To approve the field trip?
Yeah.
With All Seasons?
With All Seasons, if that's what we need to do as well.
I'm co-motioning. I'll second.
Roll call.
Okay.
Because Kristin's.
All right. Roll call vote. We got unmute. Can you?
Yep.
All right. We're doing a roll call vote. Kristin? Yes. Tasha?
Yep.
Carrie?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Casa?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So passes unanimously. Thank you for.
All right. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for appreciating this, too.
You're looking for chaperones.
I was thinking that.
I don't know. I learned long ago, I don't take parents to chaperones. I actually have a crew of chaperones, where usually parents tend to. I also, also take at least one medical person, like a PA or, they always know where it's to. So I have a crew of chaperones.
Sorry, Tasha, the call just.
Downside is the 10 kids.
Makes it a very different.
Might save up and do it myself.
Okay. Item F is the high school principal report. Peter Delany, you can.
Want to go up there so we can roast you?
Sure.
E., I don't think he can hear over there where he's been sitting.
I can't. Voices don't carry under there.
Oh, all right, then definitely.
We asked you to go up there so we can roast you.
Yeah. I have no problem with it.
So tonight is Pete's last night with us from the school committee. And, you know, he's not going to give his normal report. But I, I think from all of us, I want to say thank you for your service to the district. And thank you especially for the last 15 months. Just thinking back to sitting in this room for a lot of hours trying to figure out what we were going to do back a year ago, March. And your help has been invaluable in getting us through all of this, Pete. So thank you, and, you know, I think we all really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Anybody else?
Um, I, I do. So Pete, you have always been the face of Masco to me and my kids. And your loyalty and enthusiasm has, is so obvious when you come and talk to us really about any subject. And I have even learned to appreciate all your stories and, and enjoy them. But on behalf of the school committee, I sincerely thank you for your 29 years of service, which is a remarkable achievement. And we wish you a very restful summer.
I appreciate.
Yeah, and all the best to what you choose to do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I could. Got a story?
It'll, it'll, it'll be real quick. I, I appreciate the kind words and the sentiments, and I appreciate the work we put into an executive leadership team and a lot of the, a lot of the efforts. It certainly wasn't easy, but it was all worth it. And, you know, honestly, to you folks, the school committee, but also the Mascanomit community at large, it, it really has been my privilege to work here for 29 years in the various capacities. It's been an honor, and it was a great school long before I got here. When I, when I arrived in 92, there were a lot of, a lot of wonderful people who blessed me with a lot of time and energy that they poured into me, and it will be a great school long after I'm gone. And it's just been my honor to be able to play my role as I went through. So I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the opportunity for the last 29 years to have served.
Thank you.
Before you go, I have a proclamation here to present to you from the Massachusetts House of Representatives. Be here, be hereby known that all, to all, that the Mas House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Peter Delany, principal, in recognition of your 29 years of dedicated service to the Mascanomit Regional School District. And this is signed by the Speaker of the House, Brad Mariano, and Brad Hill, our local state reps.
Thank you, Pete.
You did.
You, too. Now we're on to the superintendent's report. With Mike?
Hey, so some updates tonight. I was looking back and realizing that we haven't had a meeting in more than two weeks at this point. So, first one is about some updated COVID guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This guidance came out on May 27. And the document, DESI, outlines that although many of the health and safety protocols for the general public ended on May 29, and that the state of emergency in Massachusetts ends on June 15, K to 12 schools are required to maintain their core mitigation strategies, including wearing masks, as we all are tonight, social distancing and hand, hand washing through the end of the school year. The one exception to this is that individuals are not required to wear masks while they are outside. The document from DESI also states that schools should prepare for a return to full-time, in-person learning in September with no health or safety requirements in place. So we will be, as far as DESI has told us right now, we are planning on a regular September opening with no, no distancing. We'll have lunch in the cafeteria. We'll be back to business as usual.
So does that include the locker rooms?
That includes the locker rooms, absolutely.
And water bubbles.
And the water fountains will be reopened.
Locks will be removed.
Will be removed.
And no masks?
No masks.
No masks.
Masks. That's what they told, that's what they've told us as of now. They, they, obviously, it could change. I mean, they've said, stay tuned. There may be more information over the summer, but right now, that's where we have.
It's over the summer, it's like the beginning of July rather than like middle of August?
Yeah. Yeah. And the only other piece on this is districts will not be able to offer remote learning as an option for students to participate in school beginning in September. So they're expecting everybody in person, full-time. As I said, no masks, no social distancing. Back to normal. Keep fingers crossed, and that's, that's what we'll be looking at for September. Next is a panorama survey. On Monday, June 14, both our middle and high schools will be administering the panorama survey to all students in grades seven through 11 during wind block. This survey is designed to measure students' perceptions of their strengths relative to social, so to a, for social, emotional domain. social, so to a, for social emotional domains, self-management, self-awareness, growth mindset, and self-efficacy. Results will be aggregated on a grade-by-grade basis and will be used by administration and faculty to develop, to develop and implement programming to adjust identified need, areas of need in the four social emotional domains. This survey was originally administered to students in grades seven through 11 in the spring of 2019. And obviously, last year, we weren't able to do it. Students in the tri-town unions, elementary schools will also take a similar survey in their own schools this month. And this will allow us actually to have the sixth grade results when students are here in September as seventh graders. If parents have questions regarding the survey, they should contact their building principals. I'd also like to offer my congratulations to the class of 2021. I also want to say thanks to high school principal Peter Delany, assistant principals Katie D'Nardo and Alicia Schatzel, high school office staff Anne Curly, Kathy Daly, and Marcia King-Gall, Pilgallan, senior class advisor Paul Massicot, and our music department head, Randy O'Keefe, for their work in making the commencement ceremony a great success. And also, of course, to Jeff Sands for all of the behind the work, behind the scenes work in making this all go up, chairs and tents and all of the other fun stuff. Also, earlier this week, we were able to announce that we've arranged for the tent on the football field to remain through June 21st so that we can have our eighth grade move-up day. This will also allow us to accommodate three in-person guests per student for this event. Again, thanks to Jeff and middle school principal Phil McManus for your work in making all this happen. And Dr. McManus will be in touch with families with additional details around the eighth grade ceremony later this week. And so we've, also, we partnered with Curative to provide a COVID-19 vaccination clinic for staff and students 12 and older. It'll be here at Maskinomat High School on Wednesday, June 23rd from 3:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. Curative is a national biotech company that provides vaccination and testing in Massachusetts and across the nation. Locally, Curative runs the Danvers Doubletree Vaccination Site. The Pfizer vaccine will be administered to all registered participants. This vaccine is approved for emergency use authorization by the FDA for individuals 12 and older. And in my blog, there'll be a link to the registration. And we'll also have a second dose session, I think.
July 13.
July 13th is what they were set up for that. So once you sign up for one, you'll get, sign up for the other one. So completing the registration will enter the patient into the system for both the first and second doses. Saturday, June 5, Middleton Town Meeting approved both the Maskinomat Regional District budget and the Warren Articles regarding our proposed amendments to the Maskinomat Regional Agreement. So I want to say thank you to the voters of Middleton for their support. Thanks, as an aside, thanks to the town administrator and the moderator for getting me right up to the front so we were out in 45 minutes. It was awesome.
Yes. It was not.
It was a hot day.
Superintendent was there till the end.
Poor Scott. And then last, I'm pleased to announce that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has completed its audit of our special education and civil rights programs and found that we're in compliance in all areas that they audited and that we have no corrective action required at this time. Thanks to Patty Bullard and the Student Services Department for their work in preparing for this audit. Nice job.
Yeah.
Yeah. And when you do these audits, you usually always get some kind of corrective action and whether, you know, they usually try, just try to find something for you to do. And so to get one that's clean is probably the first time I've ever seen it.
It's like unheard of.
Congratulations.
Good job.
My report.
When, so last time when we talked about the moving on ceremony, it wasn't looking like we could hold it outside, what?
This guy.
The whole day on Friday dealing with tents. We made it work.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, so the.
Way, correct.
Tent was supposed to come down.
Tent was supposed to come down on Monday.
Right.
Right.
And I had an epiphany over the weekend and started working with my contacts and we were able to work it out. Yeah, so.
And it's not killing us to keep it for two extra weeks or whatever it is.
Oh, it's next to nothing.
Yeah, it's very reasonable. And they, originally, so that's part of what I was talking about earlier on, where we still have all of these things in place as far as guidelines from the state. But even though people are like, well, what do you mean? It's all over on June 15. All of those regs especially apply to indoor gatherings in schools. And that's one of the few places that they're actually, you know, I went to a meeting off-site today and freaked out that I walked in and I was the only one wearing a mask.
Because that's what happens in the real.
Because that's what happens in the real world. But here, we're all still wearing masks. So that's the, that, you know, those are the things. So that, you know, in, if we were going to do it indoors, we would have had six-foot distancing requirements between families and it was just from.
Masks.
Space. We would have had masks. And so that was why the original plan was doing the field house with just the students. But now that we've been able to secure the tent, now as we saw with graduation, the rules outside are very different. And so we're, we're able to do this with, with guests outside.
And we built a really great relationship with many of our vendors. And I reached out to them on Friday morning to just kind of, to begin to talk it through and see if it was a possibility. And over the course of the day, you know, several conversations later, he was able to move some things around and to accommodate us at next to no cost. And we've done a lot of business with them. They've been great to us. We've been great to them. They were able to move some other inventory around to make it work for us and it worked. Worked out. So I think, I mean.
That's fantastic.
It took some time, but we got a little lucky. But it was really, it was worth the effort that Phil and I put into it, you know, for the benefit of the kids and the families. So it's good.
It's great.
Well, and also, the high school graduation setup was amazing.
Yeah.
Like, I heard from people who are watching the live stream that it was clear. So all this new technology and I T stuff is really working. So they, you know, the stuff went through. It looked beautiful.
Yeah, so we ran a, a fiber line out to the, out to the field, which has never been there before in preparation. So we've been planning the high school graduation since the beginning of December. And, you know, a big thanks to, you know, Vinnie and the entire I T team, Doug and the entire facilities team, my office staff, I mean, really was, and all of the folks that Mike talked about earlier, it really was a team effort. And we've been working on it literally for five months. So I'm glad to hear it went well.
Yeah. And I mean, I, I think most people really enjoyed it being in a tent aside, having.
Awesome setup.
Yeah, it's great.
Having more people than we've had before, it really, it was a special day. And it was quick.
Yeah.
We don't know. I don't know why, but.
I don't know.
Fine.
Maybe it's the handshakes that hold us back. So I would say.
Oh, yeah.
Play with those.
And that's another win-win, right?
Fewer speakers, I think. Yeah.
I don't think there's.
I don't know who else could have spoken.
There was a guest speaker. There's been, we've had.
That hasn't happened in, since 2018, I think, was the last guest speaker, so.
Anyway, I, I agree with all the other senior parents over here and others who attended. It was such a well-run and I've seen photos from some other schools and felt very lucky. Our setup was gorgeous and comfortable for everybody. And whatever this wonderful relationship you've built with this tent company to keep it up without us spending more money so that we can do the same thing for the eighth grade. Thank you.
That's great. Any questions for Mike before we move on? Okay. I guess we're back to Mike with the master teacher recommendation.
Trying to find the right document here. So tonight, we, I have a recommendation for the committee to approve Yvonne Young to master teacher status beginning in September of 2021. In your packet, there is a letter from Yvonne's master teacher team, Phil McManus, Deb Westcott, and Tammy Fay, that describes the project that Yvonne was able to do this year. She was actually able to work with the Maskinomat Education Foundation and secure a grant to install a weather station in the school, in the middle school. So that, I think I had I T issue, you know, I T input and things like that.
It's installed.
It's installed. It's up and running. As you can see, we were recommending Yvonne the appointment as a master teacher status. Love to do so.
All right, I second that. Is this another roll call?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Tasha?
Yep.
Terry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
silly?
Yes.
Casa?
Bonnie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so passes unanimously.
She's a great teacher.
She is. And Yvonne sends her regrets. We asked her to come tonight. She actually had another, other engagement and couldn't make it, so.
All right.
Designation is phasing out. So do we know how, what's the potential for more?
I'd have to look. I don't, I don't think there are very many more. It's, because you had to be, I think, into associate master teacher, I think, by last year in order to move forward. So I believe there's a lot more.
Okay.
Congratulations, Yvonne. Next up is the second reading of Policy Manual, Section A. And Melissa and Terry, who are our policy subcommittee, going to take us through that.
Okay. So the link, actually, I just, just, I wasn't seeing the link in the agenda, but it's not working. So hopefully, everybody has their paper copy.
I do.
It works for me.
Oh, well, it doesn't work for me, so I.
I couldn't get it to work earlier today.
No?
It's on the paper, it didn't work.
Let's fix it.
Maybe it's fixed.
Thank you.
Mike's working on it.
Oh, yeah.
I have it somewhere so I can see now, but.
Oh, you know what? That's my. Oh, yeah, yeah, it is. It's not.
I'm going, so this section, I don't know if I explained it the last time because I feel like it was like a month ago, but. So when we went through this section, what they did was they gave us, like for policy AA, they would give us the Masco version and then give us the mask version and have us compare it. And then we would discuss it and see what we liked better with, with the direction going forward that we wanted to keep the Masco flavor to a lot of these policies because they were personalized or they just were Masco. So particularly in this section, there really was only a couple of times where we adopted, like, changes to a policy rather than kept a policy in whole. So there's a couple of spots where we just kept our Masco policy and then there's a couple of spots where we adopted the mask policy or there was a mask policy that Masco didn't have or vice versa. So I know the red lines are somewhat confusing, but it's a, it's sort of a, a perfect storm of what, how our documents were stored versus how we had to compare them. So we're going to try to do better for the next sections.
Yay.
But.
Should be working now.
Okay.
And Melissa, just for people that are listening in, so Section A, what's the title of the section? It's.
I think it's school policies.
School policies. And the mask you're referring to is not the one on your face, it's the.
No, but it's the Mass Association of School Committees.
Okay.
And we, we.
It is working now.
Yeah. We had, we set up, we have a contract with them to do this.
Yes.
Sorry, just to confirm, it's Foundations and Basic Commitments, that's the section title.
Thank you.
Thanks for making the link up all right because I was, yeah.
So there was a comment that was brought up to us in a few areas. To answer a question, there was a question on the difference between Cory's and C H R I's, which I don't know if there's, if you say that differently, but a Cory, my understanding, and Mike and Jeff can tell, or Patty can correct me, is that a Cory is on the dear name and social security number, the things where the other one is on fingerprint database. So that might have come up. And I think it depends on what you're looking for with the level that you're, no?
We have to do everybody both.
Do everybody? For everybody? Okay.
Fingerprints, no?
Cory's typically a, you'll only get results for people over 18.
Yep.
And it's limited to Massachusetts only, whereas a, the fingerprint requirement is, it's, it goes through the FBI's database and it's a national program. So we often use them in conjunction with one another.
And then the other, there's a, there was another comment and one that I had to bring the attention is that in Section A, D D A, and it's on page, I think it's four of eight, relying on previous suitability determination. And we had a note in our, as part of our policy process to discuss, discuss whether or not we would include this section in our policy. And it was that our employer can obtain, the school employer can obtain and rely on favorably suitable determinations from a prior employer to avoid having to go through the background checks here. And I don't know whether.
So that only relates to fingerprints, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so fingerprints is a little more involved process. The person actually has to pay to get their fingerprints done. What the law in Massachusetts allows is that if you were to move jobs and you had already achieved, you know, gotten a satisfactory report, the district that you were leaving could, you know, put a letter on their letterhead that says this person's fingerprints were suitable. When Jeff and I started here two years ago, we were told that's not acceptable here. So we had to go back and get our fingerprints redone. So I don't, you know, it's a practice. So, but on the other hand, I sign every couple of months, probably, a suitability determination from Maskinomat to another school district.
I would recommend it. I would recommend it, allowing it.
Yeah.
So if.
Streamlines the process.
Yeah. If a, a teacher hypothetically that worked in Manchester Essex, let's say, went through the process, had a current fingerprint check, was determined suitable in Manchester Essex, and came to work here the next year, that, that kind of an example, we would accept that determination.
That, that is not when they started at Manchester Essex.
Correct.
Yes. I, you know, that person could have done something out of state subsequent to that that would show up when we did it. So I, I, I don't think it should be.
We still do run the Cory. That's the.
But if they did it out of state, then we wouldn't. A Cory would not check it out. But we would always, we always, to Mike's point, we always run a Cory.
Well, you know, I, I.
It's a good point.
I think you're, it's, you know, it was safer to, you know, to do both every time a new employee comes in. And does it really cost?
Fifty-five?
It's 55 for a teacher or somebody that carries a D E S E certification, like the three of us. Or it's 35 for somebody that doesn't have that designation.
So that is pay to run it through the database.
Yeah, so the, the state, the state of Massachusetts runs the program and they have a vendor. It's called Intigo. And all of the fingerprinting has to be run through that company. And then when you go and you register, you, you provide the code of the district or districts that you want the information sent to. And then the information is sent directly to, to us in this case.
The fee is for using the system, not for actually taking your fingerprint.
The fee is to administer the process and all the things that go along with that and to pay the vendor.
They won't, they won't take your fingerprints unless you paid the fee.[1771.04]
But.
Money doesn't come to us.
I, I, I understand, you know, it's, yeah, when you first said it, you know, I assumed that you're talking about just paying somebody to take your fingerprint, that can be done for free, but running it through the system.
It's all, all one process. Sign up online, and you pay with a credit card, and you go, and the place was over in Danvers, the last one.
And there's some safeguards, because if it's more than, if they're transferring, and it's been more than seven years since they've had a check.
Have to do it.
Check it again.
Right.
Or if they had a gap in employment, I think it was two years or more, then you have to also.
Right.
Left a job, went out of state presumably, and came back.
So I, oh, sorry.
No, Mike, I, I was kind of just along Costa's line, like, could you just, if I left Manchester Essex and I come here, can you, without me going through the fingerprinting process, can you just say, hey, can you do that again? Because I, I agree with Costa, like, you know.
Have to go through the whole process.
Because if it's been three years, you know, who knows what I've been doing in those three years.
So, in this, we, there isn't a suitability determination here, so for you to come here, you would have to go get fingerprinted and be Corey-checked.
Unless they're, oh, until you change the policy.
Right, correct.
Right, the policy, that's what we're talking about right now. Is the committee, is the committee willing to.
Do that.
Include in the policy that we will rely on suitability determinations.
I have a, um, question regarding what a suitability determination is, because when I first read this, I, I thought it meant like, so you get your fingerprints checked, your history comes up, and it may be clean, or there may be something on there, and the person who reviews it determines whether that, whatever's on there is a big enough deal or not. Okay, you. So say something's on there, and you say, ah, that's all right, not a big deal, this person is suitable for employment here. But then if that person goes, I'm doing this backwards, but to another district and gets that report from you, they don't know that you have seen something and made a conclusion on it, so.
They would not know the details.
They wouldn't know the details.
And they may have a different, and we may have a different.
Correct.
Way of looking at things, so that was the reason that I think we should keep it.
We should not have it.
That we should, no, we should not rely on previous.
Not allow a suitability determination.
Yeah.
Yeah, just real quickly, I think this makes sense to not rely on the, on the, the prior suitability determination. The cost seems minimal, doesn't seem like it's, uh, slows the process down in, in, in an ordinate way, or a burdensome way, so, uh, just to err on the side of caution, I would, uh, not have this section in the policy.
Right, does anyone on the school committee? Anyone on the school committee not okay with, well, that's not a double negative.
Anyone want, want, wanted their extreme log?
All right, can I just ask by raising hands if you want to include the ability to rely on previous suitability determinations? Raise your hand if you're thinking that. All right. So it sounds like we want to take that out.
I'll just punch.
Thank you, Melissa.
So then.
There's more.
Remove this section from it, and.
Just to convey vote. I'm writing a note right now. I have to capture all this.
Right.
It was on.
And then there was also a question. And Paul.
Seven in the document.
Oh, sorry. I thought somebody said four, and that's why it's.
It's four in the particular section, but in the document, it's page thirty-seven out of sixty-four.
Thank you.
ADF?
Which one? AF? ADF.
As to other.
That's the pages.
Director of Health Services, that's referred to in the leadership provision of the second paragraph. In leadership provision, just the second paragraph.
This is the wellness policy, this ADF, I don't know.
Fifty-six in the document.
Thank you, Bill.
What do you think?
It was. We still have a director of health services. It's what?
It's on the, it's in the leadership paragraph, the question's.
Yeah, directors.
I couldn't hear that well, so if anyone.
Oh, sorry. Question was around that leadership paragraph, right?
I think you want, I think you just want to say representatives from.
Yep.
Instead of directors of.
Okay, so, okay.
So it would be the School Health Advisory Council would be comprised of representatives from the following departments, Health Services Guidance, Student Support Services, Food Service, and Athletics.
Okay.
I'll capture that right now.
And then how about the sentence after that, says the Director of Health Services, is that the right title?
That's what we're saying, we're changing that to representatives from Health Services.
That one too.
In the second, in that second sentence.
Yeah, and then down towards the end, you're right.
So the coordinator job. Is that a job, the coordinator?
Service the wellness program.
Service the wellness program.
Isn't that John? Yeah.
Do we need to follow up on that?
We put it down as a.
Fill that one.
Okay, we're gonna pull policy ADF.
ADF, okay.
Again to that once more.
That's actually not a Masco policy, it was, this is one of the policies that was ours.
Special Masco.
For.
Scopes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna hold.
Is that it for comments from Paul? I just wanted to make sure I understood that this last one, AE, that that's not part of tonight's, because that's, you're talking about saving that till after we talk about B, right?
Silly, I didn't understand.
So I just wanted to make sure that the very last page, AE, that we're not, that's not part of tonight's discussion, because it says to hold until after we. Like, that, that's actually a leftover.
Yeah, that's, so we are, we do want to approve that one, we already did check B, you guys haven't seen B yet, but we already did.
Oh, you did.
So that's just a mistake from the MAS person, so ignore that line, so that makes sense.
Do you want to just table that one too, or are you okay with that?
I just didn't know if it was, yeah, I had the same question.
Mas can have a similar, have a corresponding policy for this one.
You want to hold it?
Yes.
Um, can we also circle back on AE in our next meeting, so we have time to look at that? It's pretty all encompassed.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, wasn't ready to tackle that one.
This is the one that begins with the sentence, the school committee accepts ultimate responsibility for all facets of school operations. Which, I think we need to look at that.
We have discussion.
It's not how we.
That's not how we historically run ourselves, and it's also not how the law.
No, this is.
It'll commit.
Sounds like something Al Davis.
Yeah, that is a Mascanomit policy that was part of our, um, policy.
Okay.
It's not a MAS.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, so let's, um.
It was ours.
Okay.
It was adopted back in two thousand eighteen, I think it was.
When?
It was adopted in.
Two thousand five.
Oh, five.
Oh, five.
Yeah, so let's get Dan in.
And then in oh eight.
Probably has justice.
Or Bill.
Okay.
Just, can I just clear, so just for clarification.
Yep.
The ones that we are, so we want to approve section, maybe this could be a motion, I don't know, Melissa, if you. Well, the motion would be to approve section A as presented, with the exception of, um, the policies ADDA, because we want to strike the relying on previous suitability determination piece, ADF and AE.
Well, I, the first one, I think we're okay, if we go ahead and strike that, I think we're fine with it.
Okay, okay, so we're not approving ADF and AE, and we want to change on ADA?
Yes.
Okay.
I make that motion.
Okay, I second it.
Okay. And roll call. Changed my view. Oh, good. All right. All right, roll call, Tasha.
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Bill, sorry.
Billy's fine.
I wasn't.
Fine with this, too.
Okay, all right, good. Costa?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, are we taking up section B at our next meeting?
If it fits on the agenda, we certainly can.
I think it will be.
Okay.
So that's everybody's homework for the next meeting, is to read through B and send any comments or questions to Melissa prior to our next meeting, which is on June twenty-third. Thank you both for that work.
Thank you. B is actually alone, so.
Oh, thanks.
Take two meetings, we're done.
Oh, okay, well, why don't, why doesn't everybody read through it with comments and be prepared to go through it all in that meeting, and if we have to take it to another meeting, we can. All right, we're gonna move on to the first reading of a proposed anti-racism policy. With Tasha. Why are you pointing at me? No, okay, I'll go. I thought you were gonna put something ahead of me. Um, okay, so, let me pull up the link, that does work.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, sorry. Not just for Terry?
Not just for. Share with Terry if you'd like, no, I was asking if you wanted to read that.
So I don't.
No, I got it on here.
Okay, all right, I was just, if you needed it.
I was trying to be helpful. How about I get to Lindsay?
I don't need it.
You've memorized it. Okay, so, um, this is kind of a recap, but last summer, a few dozen Masco alumni came to meet with our school committee. They presented us with a letter signed by several hundred Masco alumni and families of alumni. These prior students came to us saying that they felt unprepared to, for the more diverse world outside of our Masco bubble. Um, this got us as a committee thinking about what we could do to help them, because that's why we're here, is to help our students. Uh, we asked department heads, and they actually told us of the many ways they're already enriching the curriculum, um, by choosing diverse books to read, by diverse authors, by having kids learn how to listen to each other and debate issues thoughtfully and respectfully, and many other students that are, that were, were put in the curriculum to help our students expand, um, their worlds beyond Masco, and to get them thinking about how life beyond Masco will be. That summer, last summer, seems like five years ago, um, our anti-racist subcommittee was formed with the goal of supporting that effort of, an effort that's already happening at Masco, um, in order, again, to help our students feel prepared for this diverse world with they live in and will graduate into. We began with a resolution, as many other school committees across the country did, outlining, um, these aspirations. Throughout the course of our subcommittee meetings, we've discussed different potentially hot topics, and for the most part, we felt that, one, we needed more information ourselves, and two, we wanted to get our student body involved with the decisions as it affects them, except that's all. We then started working on a policy, together with a policy subcommittee, which helped transform our resolution that we had, um, voted on earlier in the year, into a policy. The idea being that in order for our children to feel more prepared for a world beyond Masco, every student needs to continue to have the anti-racism in the curriculum every year, the teachers need the PD that they're asking for to help prepare for that, and our students need experiences with diversity that may not exist within our bubble. These kinds of experiences have helped experience, do they think, just and their exposure to people that might be different than themselves, and our goal is to provide these situations on an annual basis to every kid, so that was the basic understanding of our, um, of the policy that we want to put in place, which is what you can see in front of you. Yeah. So that's what it is, um. Anybody have any questions? Actually, you know what, before we go there, I also wanted to just talk about the ADL training with the, um, peer leaders.
Yeah.
Um, in my informal surveying of students, I actually, um, haven't heard negative things about it. I've heard that the kids have really liked it, I've heard from the staff that they really liked it, and I've heard from the kids that they really liked it. I know that this year's peer leaders have not actually, um, the peer leaders trained the peer leaders, a few peer leaders trained more peer leaders, but they haven't, they never got to talk to the ninth grader, so that didn't happen, so there's no negative experience to have happen. But from the kids that I've talked to, at least, it's been a positive thing. Any other, any questions?
Well, I'll just, since you mentioned it before we talk about the policy, I will also concur, because I have child. So I, I have a, um, I know several of the peer leaders who've been peer leaders for the past two years, so they were in the original ADL training, and then again, part of it this year, and I had not heard anything negative, and I had heard positive. Um, I'm wondering, I have to put it on the spot, but are you a peer leader, Lindsay? I didn't know if you, don't feel any pressure, but feel free to contribute if there's anything.
Yeah, I am a peer leader, and when I was a freshman, I went to the ADL training, but that's not the one that they're talking about, I think there was a different one. And I was trained by some of the lead peer leaders about the anti-racism, and we actually didn't meet with our peer groups, because we just really haven't met with them, and I feel like conducting those conversations online is super awkward, and nobody's going to say anything, so I think the plan for next year was, in our groups, we just have open conversations and kind of bring up the topic, so people feel comfortable, and kind of in response to what Trevor said, I actually do feel like we are responsible to teach people anti-racism at Masco, because we're also, they're gonna learn it. It's just the one place you can be sure that everyone learns the same thing, so I think I don't feel a burden if somebody does something wrong, but I do think that we're all responsible to pass on messages.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, very much, Melissa. And, and, and that's basically what the anti-racism, um, policy that we're talking about, it's about, um, passing on positive thoughts and different experiences that we just might not have, it's not really anything, um, in this policy is groundbreaking in terms of changing the way we do business at Masco, it's the way we do business at Masco, and ensuring that we continue to do it the way we have to do it, and it's not a new curriculum per se, that's coming in, that's taking away things, um. It's just enhancing what we already have, and making sure, again, that every kid is exposed to as much as we can before they leave our. And again, this was brought on, we, you know, I, I don't know, we might have started a, a, the subcommittee, we may not have, but it definitely pushed us into gear when all those students came back and said, we need this, and they've also continued to check in with us, and see how we're doing, and follow our stuff, I just actually spoke with a graduate from a couple of years ago, that I'm not related to, that I saw at graduation, and she said, wow, you guys look like you've been doing a lot of good stuff, and, um, I've been following, you know, online, so. I feel like we're, we're answering to our, our people.
That's good, I remember them saying that they were going to be watching.
And they sure did. They were tough, and that was good.
And I think the overall purpose of our peer leader program is for peers to teach peers, and to talk to students, so I can see how talking about this fits well into that. Happy to hear that it's going well so far.
Should the name of the policy be expanded, because when you actually read it, it talks about more than just anti-racism.
I think anti-racism, from what research we've been doing, encompasses all of it.
Yeah. You have a suggestion?
I, I, I mean, I.
Not to put you on the spot.
But we're doing that today.
Really?
References LGBTQ plus.
Yeah.
That's.
Right.
It has, you know.
Bigger, yeah.
It's not race.
That could be of any race.
Correct.
That's why I'm suggesting that the anti-racism title may be too limited.
On ADF or some.
The resolution is, is called the Equity and Anti-Racism Resolution, I don't know if that's helpful to have.
Speak up, I'm sorry.
Sorry, the resolution is Equity and Anti-Racism Resolution, so I didn't know if that was that makes more, a useful combination for the policy.
Uh huh, yeah, it sounds like it. Terry?
I guess I just wanted to comment on the, the sort of the overall notion of doing this and why, and some of the feedback that could be heard earlier and that I've heard. I think that to, to my mind, and the way I'm approaching this question is, this is about expanding people's worldview and, and teaching more. And it's, it's not about taking anything away or denigrating the experience of any other group or, you know, taking anything out of the curriculum, it's adding to it. And to my mind, that is important, and as times change, we need to do that. And that's why I support making this a policy, and I like Bonnie's suggestion about the title.
Bonnie, thank you. Bonnie, come.
I just want to also add, Terry said, what Trevor shared is also part of the process. I mean, talking about how this is uncomfortable or these are difficult topics is part of that learning and part of that process. And it's part of what we, we talk about in our subcommittee, and we talk about it in anti-racism conversations. It is hard, and I just want to acknowledge that that's, you know, that's. It's part of it.
Yeah, good point. Yeah.
One, one way I was looking at it earlier today, I think I've, I've thought about this before, but these experiences that we want to bring in, whether they're field trips or speakers or whatever, I was, it was kind of a liking to the Tri-Town program Dash, Disability Start, Disability Awareness Starts Here. And the, I think the purpose of that program in the elementary schools was to help kids understand what it felt like to be somebody else and, for a minute. And, you know, I think in the second grade, they might have learned about blindness and, you know, so they understood, they got to feel what it felt like to be blind, or then they remember learning about, and, what do they call it? Invisible disabilities, like learning differences and all that stuff. And, and the kids get to experience it, and they're like, wow, now I know what it feels like to be, you know, a little bit different, to be that kid who's struggling in math or whatever. And, and I don't know anybody who didn't love that program. It was so well, it was heavily invested, there was a heavy volunteer investment in it. So if it ever didn't run, it was only because there were volunteers to run it, because it took a lot of work. But I, I'm happy for us to be doing that here.
And in recent years, Dash reached out to me, and we had Masco kids go down and be part of the program. They would speak to, so it was part of the program, which is unbelievable.
Oh, that's amazing, right?
Right.
Good for the kids up here, too.
Melissa had her hand up.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think that, Tasha said earlier that this has always been part of our curriculum, but we're just bringing it to light because of the need to. And the last line of Vision 2025 says that we believe the success of our graduates is dependent upon the ability to embrace and thoughtfully act within our world that is racially, culturally, linguistically, and economically diverse. And I think this is just bringing, it's a policy that brings forth what we want our successful Masco students to be. And it's not, it's nothing new. And I just, I, I think that needs to emphasize, this is nothing new, but we are just creating a long-lasting policy that goes beyond, that, that lives beyond all of us here. And that we can say that, you know, this is important to our school community. I think it always has been, but we're bringing it more specifically to light.
Yeah, it's really just supporting and encouraging something that is already happening.
Bill? All right, oh, Bill, yes.
Yes. So I guess I just wanted to make the point that, as a school committee, our, one of our three important roles is creating policies for the district to, to execute. So this policy hopefully will, will live beyond us, and it will become something that is, is, is good and positive for, for all students at, at Masco. But I think it's, 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 it's worth acknowledging that us creating this policy does not guarantee that it will be executed well. So I think it, it's responsibility of us on the school committee, as well as, you know, members of, of the community, to, to really pay attention to this, because this is really important. And I think that there, there clearly is some concern, you know, in, in the community that, that there may be hidden agendas or whatever. But certainly, this, like any other policy, policy can be great, but the execution, not so great. So, so I think we need to be sure that we're, we're, we're executing it well, and we're paying attention to that. And we can share among ourselves, as well as with the community, why this is a good policy, why this is working. And, and, and if there are issues that are identified, which I fully expect in, 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 in anything, that we're transparent about those, and we, we, we fix them as, you know, as, as aggressively as we can.
Let me just make one final, sorry, Bill.
No.
One final question. Based on Melissa's, Melissa's comments, I don't know the history of these art installations, we're in the high school library, but I'm looking at these as people are talking, and these are student-created pieces. And the words I'm seeing are unity, diversity, celebrate difference, equality, there's no normal, erase hate. So I think that, to me, I just hadn't looked at those before, and that's really interesting. So I thought I would, it would be worth pointing out.
They're really beautiful.
Point.
That is.
I don't know how long they've been there, but.
Well, now I'm not.
It's been a while, yeah.
That's for the meeting.
Yeah, I know.
Sorry, I got, sorry, Carol, I was looking around.
Lindsay, did you have something to?
Yeah, in my experience, I have learned about anti-racism, especially this year. And we've read a bunch of really diverse authors. But I think one way that we could really incorporate more diversity into the Masco community would be to actively seek out faculty from new places, like not only Masco alumni. I know my teachers have mentioned this, and I just thought that'd be a really good thing to pass on.
Thank you. We definitely have discussed that. And we've talked about, I mean, lots of things, you know, doing projects with other communities, not just providing service, but doing them together, especially now that we know how to work Zoom and do tech. Now, we don't have to travel anywhere. You know, so lots of things are now open, so there's really, really exciting, exciting things that can come. And, and we hope to keep hearing from students like yourself and, and anyone who wants to, you know, bring ideas and, and teamwork together, so.
Question, and I disagree with everything Bill said a moment ago, but I noticed that on the resolution, it specified the different, here it says, and other marginalized identities. And I know that we recently added the word disability or different abilities. I can't remember which one you landed on, on the anti-racism resolution. And I just wanted to make sure that this, is this, is this intentional? Like, when you're saying other marginalized identities, I'm assuming that's inclusive of.
Yeah, we.
The long list, because you could probably leave something out.
We definitely discussed that, like the two groups together.
Yeah.
Well, a couple from one group and the other, and the other full subcommittee. And I think we, we did come to the conclusion, not that we're, you know, set in anything, but that marginal, other marginalized communities does encompass them all. As that term was used in one paragraph on the resolution, and we were, you know, given permission. I don't know if that's the right term, but that that does encompass it all, we don't have to repeat it, so.
Okay.
But, but we did think about that, and, you know, if anyone wants to speak differently to that, that we do need to list out every marginalized community. We're happy to take advice from whomever's listening to us.
Yeah, no, because we had heard from the.
Right.
We had heard from the community very specifically about that, so I just wanted to, but I agree that it could be, it's included here, but the intention is that it's included here.
Yes.
And something that, I just have to add my two cents, Carolyn, you love me. That I, I, talking about identities here is, to me, the, the key, because it's not about beliefs or opinions, it's about human beings and their identity. And when we're talking about how we talk about peers to peers or staff, students to staff, and being trained and knowing how to have these hard conversations, for me, that's really the ultimate benefit here is there are people in our lives everywhere and throughout the school that have an identity that is consistently treated sometimes differently or discriminated against or feeling marginalized. And so when something happens, as they have happened here at Mascanomic, where that identity is called out in a negative way, it's often very hard to know what to do and how to handle it, and if you're in a place where it's safe to know who to reach out to. So for me, that's what I love about this, is you're kind of touching on every level, from administrators to teachers to students, to just know how to have these conversations and be supportive of each other as human beings. That's what I like about it. And I would move to approve this policy.
Well, this is a first.
First read.
This is a first read, sorry. But that was, that was very well said, really. Yeah, it is a first read, which, especially because it is a brand-new policy, just so everyone can kind of think about what we talked about tonight, you may come up with some other ideas or additions.
Right, so in terms of, yeah, we've heard like the change, and I like the anti-racism and equity idea to put that as a title, and any other thoughts you want to send me these two, and then we'll have it on next time as a second and possible acceptance.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Melissa, sorry, Bonnie.
Um, is this, if this is a good time to just answer Carol's question, just since we're all talking about the PD that we're referring to in the policy, but the, the training that's upcoming is the Ideas, the Ideas training. If you, the best, I don't know the best exact way to find it, but if you search for EDCO Ideas, you'll find it. And it stands for Initiatives for Developing Equity and Achievement for Students. So that's what, that's what, you know, we previously did the ADL training. The new training that's happening is from Ideas, right?
It's actually on the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents website.
Is that the same training that the peer leaders?
What we're going to do, no.
Okay, those are two different things, because I thought Carol was asking about what the, the peer leaders.
Both, I think.
Both of them?
Well, so what the peer leaders got and what our staff has had before was ADL.
Right.
And everybody was saying, oh my God, the ADL training was so good. We've heard this, we, you know, before the students came to us last summer, everyone was like, wow, that's amazing, because we had had issues at Masco, which is why ADL was brought in. And what more can we do? What's the next class? Well, what we found was that there wasn't a next course in the ADL. It was, they had a couple, but it wasn't a long list of them. It was basically, we got the training that they could provide us. And so Mike found this, because he had known about them back in Belmont, I believe. And it was training done for, for districts that had the MEKO program. I believe that's how he found, how, how they had heard about it in Belmont. And they have this whole course curriculum of classes that teachers can take, take classes that they can give school committee members, that they can give administration, executive leadership teams, and, and then go on to the next one. So it was a, a great group to associate with, because it wasn't a one-and-done thing, so.
We have, we have 10 teachers signed up to take Ideas courses this summer.
Perfect.
Oh, that's great. Anything else, Tasha?
No, other than I do apologize, I hadn't, I mean, I hadn't reached back out to Carol for her email, but it was senior week, and I was in over my head with that.
Oh, no.
If she has more, she can feel free to reach out if any more questions haven't been answered.
Okay. All right, we're going to move to subcommittee reports, and we'll start with community engagement. Bonnie?
All right, um, thank you. So we had, on May 24th, we had our big finale to the Small Town Hero Awards, the, the virtual ceremony. It was amazing, the students did such a great job. Jackie Bazazi was the, was the moderator and the event, and it was super well-organized. And I was just, I was impressed and so proud of them and so happy to be part of it. Looking forward to, it's, it's an annual tradition now, so I'm looking forward to doing this again next year and having that ceremony, have a, have a lot, a more live component in person. And the recording of the meeting is available, it's in our blog, from the June 1st post. And we can read all of the press releases about all of the 10 small-town heroes. So that was great. We are, we had our final meeting of the year, just on Monday, the 7th. And in our, in our agenda, we had a little invitation to share thoughts on our school community. And I, we didn't have many attend, we only had one person from the committee attend. I didn't do a great job of promoting that out there, but we did have a, a good discussion about kind of reflecting on the year and looking forward to what we want to be doing, what whoever is on that committee, subcommittee in the future wants to be doing with it. And a couple of things to highlight, just having a better understanding of the connections that already exist between Masco and the community. We talked about the community service hours that are already required of our, of our high schoolers, and just having a better understanding of how, how that, those connections are made, how students find their, their community partners, and how they are, how they find the students. Learning about the work that the student council does in the community, the activities that the clubs do for their causes in the community, what teachers and classes are doing that involve students in the community. And then we always are talking about things like music and theater and art and sports games and this great potential opportunities to share what's happening at Masco with our community. And just, just continuing to, to have a better understanding and support and highlight and encourage all this good work that's both good for the community and also good for the students in those relationships. We're continuing to reach out to councils on aging and fostering those connections. And we also talked about something that we'd love to see happen more in the future, which is like basically community education. We were talking about how there's a parent university that started three years ago in the elementary, in the Tri-Town Union. It didn't happen this past year, but it's this great, you know, they have a keynote speaker, and then they have, you have little breakout sessions, and parents sign up and do the sessions with, with teachers. And it's, it's a great opportunity to understand better kind of the vision and the direction and what's happening in education and the role that the, that the school is playing with, with that, with those ideas. We talked about having a community read, we've been talking about that all year, and we never actually did it, but it would just be really cool if we could find the right, the right read and have really sort of an entry point, like a topic that people are really interested in, and to actively engage our whole community in having a better understanding of what it is that education is trying to do, what is transforming, what's happening out there, and what Masco and the elementary, or Tri-Town are doing along those lines. And I also talked about the speaker series, that would be a great way to have discussion groups, too. We've had positive feedback on the listening sessions that we did this year, so that'd be something to look at again for next year. And also just, there was, there was an article and feature in Middleton Magazine, which went out to all the seniors. And so I guess just lastly, I don't know if I missed anything, hopefully, that was long, I know. But I just. But I just do want to say that if anyone on the committee, anyone out in the community, anyone in the school just has thoughts to share about this, send me an email or Carolyn or Billy or one of us an email about, you know, just ideas, thoughts, feedback on really building that ecosystem, where Masco is part of our community and we just are all together on educating our young people, because it is, it is kind of the job of us.
Thank you, Bonnie. The Community Engagement Subcommittee that Bonnie has led this year has took on so much and has done more than any other one of those committees. So I thank you for your efforts, especially in a super tough year. But yeah, to continue the work, it'd be great to get feedback from people if they have ideas for how they think we could do it differently going forward. But you guys did an excellent job this year. Thank you very much.
A good team. Make one comment.
Yes. I just remembered, we should have mentioned it earlier, but thank you also for making sure that Middleton Magazine got to every single senior at their award ceremony on their chairs. I thought that was.
That was really nice.
Well, that was Pete with some quick action, too. Last minute, and I was so grateful that Pete helped to make that happen for the seniors.
Thanks, Nate. All right, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go on to the Negotiations Subcommittee. I'm gonna give that update. We have continued to meet with union leadership to negotiate the renewal of the union contract. It expires at the end of this month. As we've mentioned previously, the school committee's priorities for the next contract are threefold. The first is more flexibility to develop a daily schedule that addresses issues of student stress and workload and meets DESE regulations regarding structured learning time. The second is the much-in-demand structured professional development for staff. And lastly, an acknowledgement of the significance of the cost of this contract relative to the tight town budgets in our communities. We have made a reasonable financial offer to union leadership in exchange for the scheduling flexibility needed to continue to have a win block and to add 90 minutes per week of professional development. In response, union leadership proposed that those changes and the cost of living would require a 14 and 1/2% increase in pay over the next three years. Clearly, that size of an increase is far out of reach of our town's budgets. We want to keep win in the schedule and we want to give our teachers the PD they have been pleading for, but we can't pay that price. Since we have been negotiating this contract for eight sessions now and haven't been able to make forward progress on our priorities, we believe we are at an impasse and will need to enter mediation. On a side note, the current contract limits how early the school year can begin. And this pushes the close of school into late June, given the uncomfortably high temperatures that we experienced in June and particularly we've seen this week. We have also asked union leadership for the flexibility to start the school year earlier by a few days. Nothing before August 25th, but that would give us a few more days, which would help avoid as many of these hot days as possible in the month of June. That proposal was also rejected this week. We think a mediator will help both us and union leadership reach an agreement in a timely fashion. An agreement we hope will provide our students with what they need to recover from the pandemic. So that's going to be our next step.
Also, just to add in about starting a few days earlier in August, that would be more in line with the tri-town union calendars, which, you know, had been a goal of 8 to 12 for years now, is to align our calendars. So they all start at least a week before us, so was also hoping to do.
Yes, I know parents are always appreciative when we can do that, which is difficult, yeah. All right, so that's where that stands. We also have an executive session tonight to talk about it more.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up on Subcommittee Reports is anti-racism. Tasha, do you have anything else?
All right. We're meeting again Monday. And that's kind of, that's the, like, wrap-up for this.
The year?
Year.
Okay.
So if anybody wants to join us, it'll be a party.
Oh, 1:00?
Yep.
Okay.
No, 2:00, sorry. On Zoom.
Okay.
Oh, shoot, I need to.
Policy, Melissa, do you have a meeting schedule? No, okay, you've been busy. All right. And then anything from the?
Do we have anything to? July 13th with mask.
Oh, yeah, sorry, July 13th.
Are you working through the summer on the policies?
I think so. Took a break the last two months, so I don't know. I don't know, Melissa, well, we haven't talked about that.
All right, because we're gonna, we will be doing the school committee reorganization and right after that, so you may want to do yourself a favor and wait, but up to you.
Okay.
Something to think of.
It may make sense for Teri and I to say.
Okay, we can talk about that. But yeah, no, I'm just formally that it doesn't happen.
She's giving us the summer off.
We have to keep momentum, I guess.
Yeah, momentum, yeah.
Okay.
There's also sections that we can't review. And we don't want to, we're not going to overburdened up at this point, so.
Okay, fair. All right, anything from the elementary school committees? Anything that we've heard? Okay, I'm gonna move to the Consent Agenda, which is the approval of the May 19th, 2021, meeting minutes and warrants of $1,156,222.11, signed since May 19th, 2021.
We'll still approve.
Second.
Okay, and I'm gonna do a roll call. Hi. Sasha.
Yes.
Teri?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Billy, yes. Kosta?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And I say yes. Session for the purposes of discussing strategy relative to effective bargaining with the Mascanomic Teachers Association and Paraprofessional Association. Executive Session Purpose Number Three. I've determined that holding this discussion in open session may have a detrimental impact on the district's bargaining position. The committee will not return to open session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight.
Second that.
Oh, shoot.
Hi.
I'm an authoritarian. Yes, seconded, and you say yes?
I did.
Teri?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Billy? Kosta?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And I say yes.
How does Kristen stay with us?
I'm gonna.
They've got it figured out.
Okay.
Kristen, go on the other link.
Gotcha.